All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Just for the sake of having a lovely presentation from a gallery which we don't often get, we will do a round table. And I will start with Counselor Overwater. If you could please just state your name. Who are you?
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Counselor Mary Ann Overwater, and I'm a new counselor since October 2013, and enjoying my time on council immensely right now.
Good evening, Counselor Harvey Walsh. Not new, but not terribly old either. So, welcome this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to visit with us tonight. I'm Debbie Bennett, and I'm second-term counselor.
Good evening, and welcome to council. I'm Mary Jane Harper. This is my third term on council, and I think I know most of you there, so welcome to our council.
Welcome, Wade Bearshell, second-term town counselor.
I'm Rudy Durier. I'm the other newbie on town council. Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Norm McGinnis. I'm the chief administrative officer for the town.
Hello, I'm Beck Wagstaff, chief operating officer at Town of Olds.
Pardon me that my back is towards you all, but I'm Debbie Godfrey. I'm legislative clerk for the Town of Olds.
Welcome, I'm Monica Leatherdale, communications coordinator with the town.
Thank you very much, and I am Mayor Judy Dahl, fourth-term mayor, and we are very happy to have you here this evening. Okay, now we will move down to added items to the agenda at this time, and I'll call to council if you have any added items at this time. Are you going to...
Your worship?
Yes, thank you. I did have a brief discussion with you. Perhaps you were going to take one of your items off the agenda?
Yes, I'm going to table the 7A Mountain View Regional Waste Management Bylaw, 0115. We've taken that to legal, and we have to do some rebounding on it, so we'll just table it.
Thank you. So, we have item 7A bylaw tabled, and our counselor, Overwater, will let us know when that comes back to council. Any further items? Hearing none, I will call for the adoption of the agenda as amended. Counselor Bearshell.
Thank you, worship. I move the adoption of the agenda as amended for May 25, 2015.
Further questions? Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving down to item 4A, regular council meeting minutes. Counselor Durier?
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the minutes from the May 11, 2015, regular council meeting be adopted.
And does council have any questions or deletions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving down now to item 5, presentations and delegations. At this time, we have the Wild Rose Medical Clinic delegations. I see. I'm sure there's one spokesperson. However, Mr. McGinnis will do introductions.
Thank you, worship. So, this item is on the agenda today. A number of weeks back, there was some questions, particularly from Counselor Overwater, about lineups for walk-in on those cool winter mornings, and we were asked to invite the physicians to come and talk about that issue, and what strategies they may have, and what to help maybe the town could offer, if there is opportunity for us to play a role. And I do believe that Dr. Ingalls and Dr. Kutske are going to speak on behalf of the group, so I'd invite you to come on up to the podium.
We would ask if you could use the mic. That would be great, and Debbie could help you with that.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting us to this meeting. I'm Dr. Kutske, and it's Dr. Ingalls, and we are more than welcome to discuss issues surrounding Wild Rose Medical Clinic, or any questions that you have. My understanding is that walk-in clinics are lines outside. It's only one issue that you would like to ask us?
Counselor Overwater?
Sure. Thank you, worship. I just wanted to find out if there was a solution that, you know, maybe all of us could come to regarding the lineups that, you know, start outside of the clinic. You know, sometimes they start out there at 7:30, and I don't have a problem in the summer, and I don't even have a problem for myself. I just see a lot of elderly people out there when it's like very, very cold, and I'm just wondering if there is some sort of solution, even if we had a bench out there with maybe a radiant heater that turned on at 7:30 and shut off at 9:00? Or, I don't know. I'm sure you guys have been put this question before, but...
I understand your question. So, before we go into discussion about this issue, I would like to say that problems with those lines, it's not new problems, and it's quite controversial issue for us as clinic as well. Even when I started working or being resident in Olds many, five years ago, I did notice that Olds, as an exception town, does have those walk-ins in the morning. In order to answer this issue, I have to tell that we have to understand why people show up so early in the morning and form those lines. And when you think in details, you would come to conclusion that probably patients have this fear of not being seen by doctor, or they do have urgent requests and desire to be seen by doctors on urgent base. I have to say that Olds quite unique town in this way because forming those lines, I would say, it's kind of tradition you would never, ever see in big cities, lines close to walk-in clinics. I have to say that we do spend a huge amount of time trying to figure out some solutions, how to resolve this problem. In the past, and currently, we do exercise different models of delivering walk-in spaces for patient population in order to minimize lines outside. I have to tell that unfortunately, 90% of walk-ins request happens early in the morning, between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, and that's probably why you can see lines outside. And we try and implement different strategies in order to be able to accommodate those requests for walk-ins early in the morning. You have something to add?
We have tried various things. We used to open our doors at 8:30 and not any earlier. We moved to opening up at 8:00, and what that did is now the line forms half an hour earlier than it used to, which is one of the challenges of how do you address that problem? Part of what we, as a physician group, talked about in how to address this problem is the fact that we actually don't want any walk-ins. So, ideal basis is for everybody to have a medical home, I think is the new term for it, so that you would be able to see your doctor on the same day. So, that's more in my mind of what we're working on, is to reduce the need for walk-ins, so that you can call and book with a doctor the same day and not have to line up in the morning. If you choose to, we will keep that service available, but we want to adequately staff our facility to actually meet patient demand, is where we're going more for it. Interestingly enough, we do have available walk-ins most days now that we have our increased numbers of physicians. I think that's...
Quite often, I've been asked why clinic is not operating, let's say, 7:30 in the morning, or even 7:00 o'clock when people start forming those lines. But you have to always remember that medical clinic, it's not simple business that we're running. Okay? It does require huge amount of restriction and regulation as a medical clinic. First of all, I just want to tell you that we not, like, it's quite inappropriate to have patients when doctor is not on the premises, and there are some safety issue around our patients that would not allow us to let them in clinic in early hours. Okay? That's why we cannot open doors very early in the morning. Another thing that I, one also point that we quite often being asked, if we can just simply increase amount of walk-in slots per day, and instead of having three doctors per day for walking purposes, have bigger amount or bigger amount of slots for walking purposes. And I have to say that I did run some statistic, and I have to tell you that Wild Rose Medical Clinic do offer quite huge amount of walk-ins, so we can accommodate majority of people. And I just want to let you know that in March of April, we did have 118 unfilled appointments for walk-in patient. So, that signifies amount of work and contributions that we put towards accommodating walk-in patient in our daily practice.
Thank you. Counselor Bearshell?
That's great, and it's good to hear. My concern, I guess, a couple of them. Number one, that people maybe don't know the fact that if they're not there, they're not going to get in. So, in my mind, I thought if you don't make it there by 8:00 or 7:30, that you will not be seen because there's a cap on that. So, that would be the issue that I think, you know, we need, well, we, you, would be great if you could get it out to the community. You know, I mean, not everybody knows, but I don't know how many people are going to emergency and paying triple the cost to our healthcare system through emergency services, and I'm not trying to micromanage your business. It's interesting to hear some of these issues that I never even thought about. But at the same point, maybe there's just a communication issue with residents in our community that use that clinic, because if they feel they don't get there, they will not be seen. Therefore, if they feel they have to, they then go to the hospital, and then, you know, there's been times where, or go to the emergency, and I think once they're there and checked in, if it's a small issue, that they're not to be released until they're seen. Correct me if I'm wrong, because you look like you want to say something, so...
I don't think it's communication issue, because traditionally, we see in patient, like, let's say Friday afternoon clinic, somebody can show up at 3:00 p.m. and can see walk-in doctors. So, it's just patient fears that they won't have possibilities to see family doctor. There are no rules anywhere written that if you won't show up at 7:30 outside of our clinic, you won't be seen by doctor. And traditionally, for years and years, we providing the service up to 4:30, and people are aware that walk-ins hours are, you know, like, we work in extended hours. Do you have anything?
There are definitely an occasional day, particularly during flu season, where you will notice that our walk-ins have filled. Our staff then do say, if you feel you need to be seen today, emergency is the spot where we can get you seen. I would say, so I've been here, it'll be five years this fall, that I will have been here for, and since starting here, there is better public knowledge around the try the clinic first before you end up in emergency, and it honestly, it takes some time to get the education out there to let people know how can we best get in to see a doctor, what's our best bet? Because patients in general don't want to be in emerge, which is good, because we need to save emergency for our emergencies, and with things we can see in walk-ins, we want to see in walk-ins. The question of how do we educate part, the evolution of what's gone on since my arrival and Dr. Kutske's arrival is the increasing numbers of doctors, but at the same time, increasing scopes of practice. So, we're doing more at our hospital than we used to, which takes us out of clinic. Overall, we're in a better situation by a long shot today than we were five years ago when they were busy recruiting desperately for people when all of we came on. We have the numbers of physicians now that most days, our walk-ins are not full, as evidenced by 118 or 88, not sure which, walk-in slots that were not filled last month. So, we're hopeful that you will see the fact of you can show up at 8:30 when the doors open, and you'll be seen. There's not that fear of we have to be there, or the 40 people you can see this morning will already be in the doors.
Supplemental, Counselor Bearshell, and then Counselor Harper?
Yeah. So, how would, or how do you feel that this, and I agree, I mean, I've gone in the afternoon and phoned when I was, I felt it was necessary that I be seen, and I've been seen. You know, if, but how is this information that we're sharing today, has it been made available to the citizens of Olds? Because I don't, and that may be just sheer ignorance, but I don't know without going up and asking people specifically if this information is out there, because I would respectfully disagree with you that people know that, because I don't think they do. Some do, but I don't think many do.
So, our walk-in services provide the same hours as walk-in hours. So, basically, all that you have to do, you have to, if it's after 10:00, call clinic and request that for appointment to be seen on walk-in base. And if you're asking in a way of distribution, we probably have to be a little bit more clear and make statement that walk-in hours is also our walk-in hours as well. That's, I think, one of solutions that we can implement.
Thank you, Counselor Harper.
Well, and that was just my question too, about point of clarification, how your business, and I'm not about to tell you how to run your business or provide communication to the public, but does even your answering service provide that information that walk-in hours are available from 9:00 till 4:00 as part of that answering system?
I think that's a lovely suggestion, and I actually like it, but not on the main thing, but a for-walk-in information, press X button, because it drives me crazy when I call a different place, and you've got your three-minute-long blur before you finally get to push your button that you've been waiting to hear. But that would be something that we can take back to the group and consider that would help a bit on it, and we'll discuss it absolutely.
So, I really appreciate it.
But I just would like to add a little bit more information. I think if we add this information to phone services, it also will provide some negative feelings towards patient population, because if it said that walk-ins provided between 8:00 and 4:30, and somebody calling at 3:00 during flu season and no walk-ins available, they will be complaining about our service, because it's not reflection actually what we are advertising. And on a daily basis, that's what we see in the clinic. We do have best intention to provide it, but because of amount of patient, sometimes we not physically capable of doing it.
Understood. Counselor Bennett, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you very much for the information. It's greatly appreciated, and I, for one, thought that you had to be in for a walk-in by 11:00 in the morning. I had no idea. So, yeah, just to let you know.
Counselor Durier, and then Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate the information. I like Counselor Bennett to have had my eyes open just a little bit. Just a question about a comment that you made. You said you are working on being able to have the patient seeing their own doctor that particular day. How is that coming along? Have you made some progress? Is it a two-year plan? What does that look like?
I will answer first. So, each doctor has a different working philosophy and working strategy. For example, my patient don't have problem seeing me, because I have quite few openings on a daily basis, but there are some physician who have longer waiting time. So, physician who do have longer waiting time do apply different strategy, and they have, for example, same-day appointment or same-week appointment. How it works? Let's say I'm Dr. Smith's patient, and I'm calling saying, "I'm Dr. Smith's patient, and I would like to see my doctor today," and those patient can use particular doctor slots reserved only for their own patients.
Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Yes, thank you. I did not realize that if I wasn't there at, you know, 8:00, that, you know, I was gonna, if I was the 40th one in line, I wasn't going to get in and see somebody. So, that's good to know. I also understand you are doing a trial basis of being open Saturday mornings, well, I think it's just Saturday mornings.
All day.
Oh, okay, all day until June, and then, now, is it my understanding with your doctor compliment that, I mean, it's great, we have a lot of doctors in town, and I'm really happy for that, because I talk to people in northern communities, and they really don't have any doctors. So, I'm very grateful for that. But I'm just wondering, has the Wild Rose Clinic thought of opening, like, being open maybe some doctors till like 8:00 to help accommodate some of the other people that really just can't get in earlier?
So, Saturday clinics, evening clinics, it's something like our clinic constantly in a trial phase, we trying something, if it does work, we implementing and distributing this information to public. We don't have yet any suggestion or any resolution made in regards of Saturday clinics, but...
We have no firm plans in regards to that suggestion. They are ideas that we have floated and talked about a lot amongst our physician group.
But usually, how it works, if we do have positive feedback for patient population and doctor agree on it, and everyone has same idea, we do implement it in future.
Thank you. It's like pilot project with...
Yeah, we do run in quite few of those projects, actually.
Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much for all the great information, and my question is, is how can we, as the Town of Olds, help you to communicate what you've provided to us tonight about your walk-in hours, about your pilot projects for Saturday openings, about other opportunities for patients to see you at different hours?
Of course, if you are, if you want that help. I mean, you might, what we're saying is that we're certainly willing to lend a hand if you need any help in public engagement in that area.
We have a website. It's on the OI website.
We have a website.
That's good information. We'll all go there, and we'll check that out.
It's on your website, apparently, on the OI website. I knew that was one thing that we're working on. We are looking at things like that of how can we get this information in a way that's easier to change, because part of the problem with, this is the way things have always been done, like, you line up outside the front doors of the clinic in order to get in for walk-ins, is changing that practice, but letting it be a constant flow of information, such that if we find out that we don't need morning walk-ins anymore, because we have enough doctors and we can get patients seen, that would be an ideal. I doubt we're ever going to get there, but in an ideal world, that's where we would We can get that information out quickly, and that's part of the hesitation that you see on, or is in my face, of how do we respond directly to that question of, we don't have a perfect response of, this is what we would like you to do to fix this situation, because if we had that, we would have already done it.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly do respect your time again. We certainly do know if we have further comments or public questions, we can forward them to our CAO, who in turn knows who to send that through and flow that through to. You've got a very busy schedule, and we certainly do want to say you've helped us a lot with our questions this evening, so thank you for taking time to be here. Anything else you'd like to add at all in closing?
Yes, just that we will discuss this as a group, and if we do come back with, this would be a great item that you guys could help us with, we will get back to you by all means.
Respectfully so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening. All right, ladies and gentlemen, moving down then to business arising out of the minutes. We can. Yes, Counselor Durier?
I would move that we receive the presentation from the Wild Rose Medical Clinic with appreciation, and that they be thanked for their attendance.
Absolutely. And those in favor? That's carried. Are you going to stay and listen to us? You, I was going to say, we're so excited to have someone in our gallery this evening. You bet. You can give us feedback, too. All right, no business arising out of the minutes. Hearing none, we'll move down to unfinished business. And we have none, so new business, page 259A of your agenda, and this is proclamation for seniors week. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, worship. I'm going to let our COO lead you through this RFD. As we have for the last six years, council has proclaimed Olds, seniors week in Olds in that first week in June. It's one of the initiatives that the provincial government has begun to do to, you know, tie together both a recognition for the tremendous contribution seniors make and have made to the growth and to the vitality of our province, but also, they use that week as an opportunity to connect generations. So, again, as it has been presented, there are a number of events going on, and one of those is, you're certainly all invited to, and that's the pancake breakfast that the Lions Club is putting on for seniors and others in the community to also celebrate seniors week on Thursday, June 4. So, with that, I'll turn it over to your worship.
Well, yes, when we asked that this be brought back as a proclamation, I see you've done a lot of proactive work, and I thank you, Mr. Wagstaff. And if council has any questions? All right, Counselor Durier?
Thank you, worship. I'd be most honored to move that June 1 through 7, 2015, be proclaimed as seniors week in the Town of Olds.
Thank you. Lots of great activities. Any questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Page 26, item 9B, please, Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission, and this is the report on board salary and benefits that we had discussed at our Policies and Priorities meeting. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, worship. This item is on the agenda at the request of Counselor Overwater, who is our representative director with the Waste Commission, and I think it's relatively self-explanatory.
Yes, Counselor Overwater, would you like to speak to this at all? I appreciate and respect your forthwordness and transparency with the Waste Management Commission in sharing this. It is available for all people to see, but bringing it to council was good. We have a lot of commissions that we work with, and a lot of our taxpayers are, they just see the dollars that we spend in our budget that we have, but the money that counselors make working on commissions and outside, they don't see, so this was very upfront. Thank you. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Yes, this was brought forward to our Waste Commission meeting from a counselor in Didsbury, requesting why this was not in our audited financial statements. Well, the reason why it wasn't in the financial statements is because it's not a requirement for commissions to report that. Unlike councils, we are to report that in our audited financial statements. So, we thought, again, with transparency and with everything that the commission has gone through, we felt it, that we should be able to publicize this. There should be a public document as to what the honorariums, what the benefits are for the Mountain View Regional Waste Commission Board, and I do believe I have asked for that to come forward from the wastewater and from the Water Commission. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. If the reps would like to speak to whether that will be forthcoming to council? We'll start with Counselor Walsh, and then Counselor Bearshell.
Does council approve the government's, the governance expenditures for the wastewater commission? That was before you, earlier this year. It wasn't broken down, but it was... It wasn't broken down, but it was the total governance cost for the wastewater commission. I'll have to check and see if they have anything different from what they had.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Counselor Overwater?
So, then, it's through the chair directed to Counselor Walsh, then, or what you're saying is that, um, yes, it's in your budget, however, um, it's not necessary for council or the public to know what your honorariums are?
I'd have to go to the website, but it used to be on our website, what, what it was, the policies are there and the amounts, but haven't been there for a while, so I'll have to double-check that.
That's good. I think it's good for the people to know when they ask us during our budget process what, uh, what, it, it's, it's, uh, an assumption and a perception, once again, you know, so-and-so's not making, spending any money, and look at you, and people don't understand that other people are more busy in other commission areas, and they are still being paid a salary. So, would you like to respond at all, Counselor Bearishaw?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the need to break it down, but I will talk to the committee, uh, the Waste Man, sorry, the commission, and see what, uh, what their thoughts are, um, and, and what the practices are. I mean, I, I agree with Counselor Walsh, um, but I, I, again, to, this means nothing to me, uh, these numbers, other than, uh, some made more and some made less, and, and to me, it just, you know, for someone to go and say, okay, well, the, you know, they don't, it doesn't even list the chair, it doesn't list duties, it doesn't list, so to me, it's pointless information, other than the grand total of what was spent, but, um, you know, if people want it, it's, it's available, but I'll talk to committee, or to the commission, and, and see what they like, or, or what, uh, they feel, and then go forward from there.
Thank you. Uh, would, would you like to, uh, put a motion on the floor, then, please to receive for information?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. I move that the Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission, two thousand fourteen, report on board salary and benefits be received for information.
Any further questions? Counselor Harper?
Well, I'm just pondering the comment that it's how the commission feels, or whether it be the wastewater commission or the water commission. But we're members, this council is a member of that commission, and maybe it's how we feel. And I'll leave it at that for right now.
Certainly. I will note, though, that, uh, when we do our organizational meetings once a year, and we make appointments to those commissions and boards and committees, I'll be asking for that information, just for awareness for all council. Go ahead, Counselor Bearishaw.
Well, I don't necessarily, I'm not even, you know, I'm sort of going off what I'm thinking, um, not as far as, I mean, there's, these numbers tell you absolutely nothing. So, i- if we're gonna report everything, let's report everything. I, I don't see what, um, what sort of bugs me is the sort of, that it's being hidden, you know, if we want an explanation for it, but I certainly I'll ask. I mean, as long as any board or commission is compliant, um, you know, under the M G A., I don't understand, um, you know, people are free to ask, um, and I have no problem with that, but, again, tell me what, tell me what, uh, page twenty-seven means to anybody. We know certainly that, we know certainly that, that there's members of this commission that, uh, have worked harder and longer to, and the reason why their, their bills are higher, and so we know that, but to the general public, they won't know that without an explanation. So, um, but it's an interesting question.
Okay, final comment, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I want to make a statement that I, I am not insinuating that the wastewater or the Water Commission are hiding anything. Uh, it is a public, uh, information, and it was brought forward to the Waste Commission, and I was just wondering why, um, it's been never brought forward from the Water Commission or the wastewater commission. That was, uh, I'm not insinuating that you're hiding anything, because if you are, well, you shouldn't be.
Good, oh, good, good, good response. Anyways, um, you know what? Uh, I'm sure that those forms for council would be available for us to preview if we so wish. And, uh, yes, is some, some work that I'm gonna have to look at during organizational with council, it sounds like, is what I'm hearing. We have a motion on the floor? All those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Let's move down then to page twenty-eight, item ten A. Uh, it is the end of the month, and, uh, last council meeting of the month, and it's our time for reports. If I could have a motion, please to get this on the floor for discussion. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the reports from council, authorities, boards, commissions, committees, and task forces, ending May twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, be received for information.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with Counselor Durie today.
Thank you, worship, I appreciate that. So, um, I've attended a couple of meetings, um, as well as Pillars Village, and that kinda is the segue into my first report, short, though it is. We did have a meeting with the Olds District Municipal Library Board, and of course, the focus was on Pillars Village and, and making sure that everything was ready for that particular, um, event. And I, I can report, um, that I think they will show profit. Um, last year, uh, they announced that they had made five thousand dollars, and were hoping to make at least that much this year, and, um, it was well-attended. I was there, Counselor Harper was there, and, um, I think we had a pretty good time. It was, it was a lot of fun. I also attended the Parkland Regional Library, um, meeting, um, about a week or so ago. Um, I believe I put, or these were in your package, if, I'm not sure, a lot of facts and figures, but I think the most important part is just up at the top, and if you were to go through that, which is Ron Shepard, uh, Ron Shepard's report, it, it gives a good, um, encapsulation of what, what's on here, and you can just review those facts and figures. From that particular meeting, um, they received the auditor's report, and it was a clean report, that was good to know. Uh, a couple of the big things that were touched upon had to do with the building. Um, they need to look at the heating and cooling system, and also, in conjunction with that, how the work, uh, is, uh, done efficiently at, um, at Parkland Regional Library, so that in the long run, they can save more money. Um, they also, um, talked about websites for libraries. Um, just give me one second here. And, and in that, they are trying to, um, upgrade their website, as well as all the websites in the libraries, um, and so they're looking for a preferred website developer to help them with that. Um, they feel like they're just, they're kind of falling behind, and they need to get that done, and they're hoping to save some money by working with the Yellowhead Regional Library System as well, too. Um, I think that's all I have to report from the meetings that I've attended. Um, trying to think what else I went to this, this past couple of weeks. I think that's it, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Bearishaw?
Thank you, worship. Uh, report about, if I can find my phone here, figure it out, for the Water Commission. Um, so, there's some interesting news. The, I, I won't bring the details at this time, but the, the lawsuit, um, with Correx, or the, sorry, the company for the faulty valves, is, um, being settled as we speak, so, I'll have the details of that. Um, I'll make sure that I don't misspeak, so I'll have the details for that at the next, after the next Water Commission meeting. Um, so, the plan is starting, we had a meeting the other day, and the plan's starting, um, to twin the line, the next phase would be to twin the line from the midpoint reservoir, which is at, uh, Olds College there, on the, to Crossfield. Rockyview County, uh, is interested once, but basically, um, money talks when it comes time to, uh, to actually twinning the line, so approximately a thirty, thirty-three million-dollar bill, of which, if Rockyview, uh, of course, the, the capacity of the line would, would be, um, reflect the needs of Rockyview County, would be approximately twelve million dollars. The commission share, about seven point five million, with government grants, without the grant, around seventeen million, would be the commission portion of the bill. The commission would be well within their debt limit, according to the information I've been given, if we, if we were to borrow the full amount. So, planning for the future, um, and if anyone has any questions, um, as I, I mean, this is in the preliminary stage, just the business plan, and trying to plan for the future, and, of course, that part of the, uh, Crossfield and area is, is in dire need of, they need water to, to expand, so it's interesting, so the, the planning stages of that are, uh, starting to happen.
Thank you. Is there anything further? Police advisory?
No.
Oh, that's tonight?
That's tomorrow.
Thank you. Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. I have a few notes. So, I attended the Citizens on Patrol meeting last week, it was a potluck supper, their last meeting, uh, for the summer break. They did, uh, discuss, um, sending delegates to the Alberta Conference for Citizens on Patrol. It will be held in Le Duke this year, at the end of September. The question was, and I will pose this to Mr. Wagstaff, because they do borrow our town flag for a parade of flags, did we find money in our budget to have a standard for our flag? Last year, they had to use a broomstick, so, I'm hoping that we found a standard for our flag. Anyways, question asked?
Through your worship, I'm certain that we can find, uh, money in our budget for a...
Thank you very much.
...a community flag standard.
Thank you. So, that was question asked, answered. I also attained, um, once again, if there's any counselor wishing to go on a patrol with Citizens on Patrol, uh, please contact me. I know that Counselor Bearishaw did a patrol, and not Counselor Overwater? You would like to? Yes, and Durie? I will try to arrange for you to connect with one of the patrol members. They have been doing a number of patrols, uh, they have a few new members, uh, part of their group, and I know that they'll be looking at, uh, trying to recruit some more. They were an active participants of, um, the, the Crime Prevention Week, which I understand was quite successful, and our by-law officer, Mr. Reed, was part of, uh, the meeting last week as well. Um, last week was a busy week. I also attended the Chamber meeting, and just to let you know, the Olds Chamber of Commerce has accepted an invitation from Olds Institute to take the lead on providing the customer service, uh, delivery program that was initiated by Fort McMurray, and we expect to hear more about offering customer service skills to employees of, of local business. So, you can, that the Chamber will be offering over the next few months. I, um, also, there was a report in reference to an expanded portion of the Olds Toberfest that was initiated by Olds College last year. They are partnering with the Olds Regional Exhibition, expect, expect to see bigger happenings in reference to the Second Annual Olds Oktoberfest, and it will be a joint venture and partnership of Olds College, Palmeri Hotel, Olds Regional Exhibition, and I believe other groups are going on board as well. The, the event will include a rodeo now, as well as, I believe, a beer festival, so there's more to come in reference to that. And at M P C. meeting last week, M P C. approved, uh, the relaxation of side yards on a new development for Olles, which is a, one of our goals, to see more non-residential development, and that's, uh, a small strip mall, I believe, along Highway twenty-seven, on a vacant lot, so we shall be all very happy to see that lot, um, having a building on it. So, it's the corner of Highway twenty-seventh and Forty-ninth Avenue, so, no more dandy lines, no more dirt. Hopefully, a new building will soon. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I had reported, um, some of it, uh, in the middle of the month, and further, I had attended the community litter pickup, I attended, uh, the Crime Prevention Day, and, um, my further meetings are actually, or duties are this week, so...
That's it for right now, thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, there seemed to be quite a bit happening this month. Uh, attended the O I. Tech Committee and, and O F L. Things are going well, the key performance indicators for O F L. are on target for April, and it looks like they're being on target for May. Uh, Green Field Development, which is an O I. responsibility, the demand is increasing for Green Field Development. Their business plan didn't account for the, the growth in this community, in the newer areas, so they need to find more money to provide conduit and, uh, distribution boxes and that type of thing, so, well, it's a, it's a good news, bad news scenario, it's upfront capital class, that's always a challenge, but, once it's built out and people are hooked up, it, it works out fine. Also, I, uh, attended the Red Deer Municipal Users Group. They've, uh, they've undertaken a, a project called Municipal Water Quality Action Plan, and that is to check out the water quality of the Red Deer River, and, uh, Renee McElack will be coming around to each municipality and having a chat with staff, not to see where we're at and how we affect the river quality, so, he's beginning that this month, so something to look forward to. I raised my concerns around surface water runoff, that's basically all we have now that will really affect the Red Deer River, since we're sending our, our waste to Red Deer, or soon will be. Also, they had a guest speaker at that, that, uh, my favorite liberal candidate, Judy Stewart, was there to speak on, uh, Alberta Integrated Resource Management. I know, some of you know Judy, she used to be, uh, mayor of Cochran, she's also a lawyer for Parian Rights, and she, she's walked on the South Bow system, and she's also working on a, a, her P H. D., she's a P H. D. candidate on the multi-stakeholder organizations, and she's looking at water systems as part of that, so, she brought a lot of information, she kind of, the effect that municipalities will face in the future on some of these policies that the provincial government is producing, and, uh, she's brought a lot to the table. I was gonna forward the, her, her presentation to you, but it's not up on the website yet, but it was very interesting, some of her analysis of these policies, basically, her, her take on it was, if we're not involved, especially in the land use framework within our region, by the time it's done, it's too late to have input, municipalities need to be there, and her experience is municipalities aren't showing up to these land use frameworks, which provides a lot of background for the watershed and the policies that come out of it, and, depending on who's there, is usually the direction that the policies go. If it's skewed toward environmentalist, that's the way it will go, if it's skewed to land developers, that's the way it goes. She's finding that if you're not at the table, they actually develop the policies around who's there, and every watershed is coming up with sort of similar, but different policies. So, she's encouraging municipalities to make the effort to get out with these, uh, discussions, and the Red Deer Watershed hasn't had theirs done yet, so, Red Deer Municipal Users Group are putting a lot of time and effort in studying the basin and finding out what the future requirements are, creating some baseline data for water quality and that, so, quite interesting. So, I'll forward that presentation when I get it. Also, been spending a lot of my time with the Central Alberta Economic Partnership, we're looking for a new executive director, so, seems like a lot of H R. meetings, uh, traveling the Red Deer to discuss what we need in a new executive director. That ad is out, closing date's probably the first week of June. That ad is out, closing date's probably the first week of June. So, Dale Barer is moving on. And our annual general meeting is June 12th, same day as our MOA meeting. It's supposed to be from 8:30 to 10:30. I was going to be finishing and ready to about 10:30 and be back here for 10:30, but I'll figure that one out. If he's not there, I may be delayed a bit. Also, a word of transportation came to Cape and offered a project for Central Alberta. They want to do an inventory of tourism businesses in Central Alberta to identify the gaps. This is a branch of Alberta Tourism to help develop businesses. It's their economic development branch. You know, we mostly know the advertising side of it, but this is a branch that actually mentors and helps businesses get started and provide resources for businesses. So, they're looking at Central Alberta and they'll come up with a list sometime later this year. They looked at Cape to help them out, to provide some resources and direction, but they're basically bringing their own manager and money to help pay for that. So, that's good news. What else? That's about it. It was a busy month.
Thank you, Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, well, I intended, attended both the community engagement sessions, April 29th and May 12th. We had some very good comments back from our citizens. And I thank the administration for organizing that. I'm sure it was a lot of work and hopefully, well, we did get a lot of good feedback. So, I look forward to our ongoing discussions on completing that. May 4th, the Waste Commission, we had a meeting with our staff, telling them at that time that we were going to outsource our municipal and rural pickup. So, that RFP went out. And basically, the RFPs, I believe, came back and were not quite suitable for the needs of the commission's municipalities. So, this morning, the commission had a motion on the books that all six municipalities will have to go out and look for their own provider. And that will, the provider will have to go across our scales at $100 per ton. And the new provider will need to start by January 1st, 2016. We also had our first annual general meeting for the commission this morning. It was short and sweet, but again, it was our first annual. Then, we also will be hosting a dinner meeting with our residents around the landfill, just to let them know what is happening and what we're planning for, just daily cover and just making sure that they're up to date as to what's going on there. We're also in the process of drafting a RFP for a new financial provider, as the county will be finished doing our financials as of, I believe it's September 1st. We will be sending out an RFP June 1st, so next Monday, to be back to us by hopefully June 19th. So, all municipalities and third parties will advertise it and will get that sent out. We, right now, are working on a new business plan and a governance plan. We finally sold the two leased trucks that we had, yeah, which was great. There's a company in Carstairs, I believe, that is buying them. Yes, we're taking a loss, $27,000 each. However, we were just sitting there paying insurance and the vehicle's not moving. So, anyways, those are now, will be sold. The Olds Transfer Station has a lot of work that it needs to be done on the building. And we did get a work order back for the cost of it. It was going to be about $109,000. Some of it is aesthetics, which we've directed our administration at the Waste Management to just go back to the contractor, just to fix the stuff that needs to be fixed for safety-wise, meaning the doors. There's a couple of doors, there's part of the roof and the floor going into the walking floor inside the actual building that needs to be fixed as well. I think that is about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will ask, I'm not going to repeat, I attended a lot of things counselors did, but I will ask the question on the public engagement for the community standards by law to our CAO, as we have our, Monica is here this evening. We had the questions on the website with regards to not being able to, citizens not being able to get a response back. Have we been able to fix that and what did we do?
So, yes, when we went back and checked, it certainly was ambiguous, to say the least. The intent was, if you wanted to continue to get information on the process, leave us your email address and we will continue to give you information. But certainly, we could see why a couple of the people at the engagement session thought that that meant there was going to be a response to their specific response, input that they put into it. So, absolutely ambiguous and we probably should have worded it differently. So, those that did, we met today, so those that did leave an email address, we're going to give them a response, telling them about the process going forward and what they can look forward to. But not necessarily an answer to their specific request.
Okay, that's good. All right, on top of that, I had an interesting greetings with the Alberta Colony Educators Conference. I wasn't really certain who the Alberta Colony Educators were until I did my background and study on them. And they're the Hutterite Colonies and the teachers that teach, and it was a real eye-opener. I learned quite a bit. It was cultivating a learning community. And it was a full day of wonderful activities for the teachers and the participants and how to engage students in critical thinking. They were there to talk about everything. I know some of you understand, some of you understand that you've, sorry, Phil Callaway, you've heard Phil Callaway speak. He's a motivational speaker and he's humorous and he did an excellent job with the diverse educational teachers and parents that were in the room. So, I really enjoyed that one on behalf of town. Caroline Parade, I, on behalf of the Town of Olds, like to, along with the Central Alberta Mayor's, try and present Olds as many places as I can in Caroline. It was not a nice day, but the streets were still lined with children because they don't care about rain when it comes to a parade. And MP Blake Richards was with, along behind me and we made the best of it. And there were quite a few mayors that did show up, Rocky Mountain House and Reeves, et cetera. So, I did have an opportunity to speak to our MP Blake Richards and it was good to see him. I've been working an awful lot with council these days with regards to our CAO performance review and we're excited to move that along. And also, in regards to the interim cooperation initiative with the Mountain View County Honor, memorandum of agreement for the Town of Olds, which council will be now privy to at learning and understanding that at a special council meeting upcoming. And for fun, I went down to the Olds High School Interact Club, spring into summer. It was an excellent event. The students were extremely engaged. It was, it turned out to be a really nice night and there was a lot of fair trade items. And I really encourage council to get involved with some of these students. They're doing a fantastic job in our community. The only other question I had was, when we get weed spraying services in the mail, and maybe you could help me, Mr. Wagstaff, I know there was a time that the Town of Olds, we did speak a lot about the type of chemicals and things we wanted to use on our own parks. Should they be talking to us first? Is it, does it matter to the Town of Olds when these businesses come to town looking for jobs for weed spraying services? Does it contravene any of our bylaws or our uses of the chemicals we use? Because I know we were, we did have a time in the Town of Olds where we tried not to use chemicals in our parks.
Okay. Your worship, I'm going to comment sort of in reverse order of what you brought up in your last statement of our attempt to reduce the use of chemicals within our parks. We've been having discussions as recently as, or two minutes before this meeting started? And again, tomorrow, actually, with regards to our parks and, and how we can best address getting on top of some of the unsightly growth issues. I'm not going to call them weeds, because technically, some of them are not weeds. And we are going to be discussing how we could address that. At this point in time, our practice to date has been to limit the use of any herbicide or chemicals as much as we possibly can. Given the last couple of years of growth, and especially in the dandy lines, we're going to be reevaluating that approach for this, this season. That doesn't mean that we're going to abandon that principle altogether, but we do need to have some discussions and debate as to what our best, best strategy moving forward for this season and then return to the, you know, limiting the use of herbicides. To your first question about other companies, if they're meeting, and I will double check and then get, and get back to you, I do not, I'm not aware of a bylaw that would indicate and restrict what companies, businesses that have business licenses within the community would be using, as long as they meet the environmental standards, which, from our experience in the town and some of my past experiences, reputable companies, and that would be key, reputable companies will be meeting those environmental standards. With that said, also, I would, when flyers like that come around, that would be one of the things we'd want to ensure that they, they have taken out a business license in town.
I'll forward that on then. Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Durye?
Thank you, your worship. I was peaked or tweaked, whatever, with the comments that Counselor Walsh made with regards to watershed quality. I'm not sure what the right word is, but I was wondering if the town was participating in looking at that situation for, for our residents.
There were two things that Counselor Walsh mentioned. There was the study that's being done by Armagh and there is the participation with the watershed area that will be part of the Land Stewardship Act, which has not started yet. So, we're waiting for those consultations for our area to start. Ours will be the last in the province. But if you're talking about the quality of the Red Deer River, that the Red Deer River User Group is going to be participating in, I believe Counselor Walsh has said that they will be visiting municipalities. So, I haven't seen anything and I want that process looks like or what type of input they'll be looking for at this point.
Thank you. Would you like to respond?
Just expand on that. Mr. McGinnis is right. We're the last region within the province to, to be looked at. And that was, it's important that we be a participant in that, in those discussions if we wanted to. But you're right, the downstream, and I bring my comments in relation to some of the impervious cover that I've been talking about and the amount of runoff and flushing into the, into the watershed that eventually finds its way to the Red Deer River. And some of those concerns I raised at Red Deer Municipal Users Group also. So, we're just in the preliminary stages and it would be interesting to see how far we can, we can go, what municipalities within the region can do. As pointed out in that meeting, there's only about six monitoring stations on the Red Deer River to monitor quality and they kind of end at Sundry. By the time you get to Drumheller and further south, after Red, there is no monitoring stations on the quality of the water within the Red Deer River. So, those are some of the issues that we're facing, just, just getting provincial level awareness of what we have here. And so, you know, some of the issues are being raised.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look for some more information on that. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Counsel Bennett at this time. Are there any further questions? I will then call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Page 46, please, item 11A. This is the financial update. Who would like to make that motion? Nobody? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I moved that the financial report for the four-month period, January 1st, 2015 to April 30th, 2015, be accepted for information.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lucas on vacation? He's away?
Actually, our CFO and our manager of finance are both are at the Government Finance Officers' Association meeting this week. So, I get the privilege of answering any questions that you might have on our first quarterly report for our financial statements.
All right, counsel, get with it. Ask lots of questions.
No tough, technical questions, please.
Well, then, we'll give them to Doug. Questions? Do we have questions? Counselor Durye?
If I read this right, there remains a fair amount of money yet to collect from taxation? Please?
Oh, it just started.
Okay.
You read it right.
Okay, I just...
So, yeah, assessment and taxation notices just went out in the mail.
Don't be sorry, no questions, a bad question. Counselor Bennett?
Sorry, I should have presented this one sooner, but I had to ask about check number 5297? What?
We're not there yet.
Oh, wrong one, sorry.
You're good, you're good.
I'll withdraw for a moment.
All right, Counsel Durye?
Thank you, your worship. I noticed on page 50, Schedule 4, under Major Projects, we had repaired, is that right, two speed radar signboards?
It cost $22,890. It looks as though that that is in the 2015 budget. It'll be financed out of taxes and it, it appears that work has not been done yet. Is that correct?
No, and they're not repaired. They're replacement. So, they're going to be replaced. Just prior to Joe having his, his leave, he had done some quotes and he just received them again here last week. So, he's proceeding with that, now that he's back.
Thank you. Yes, that's good to, and hopefully, they're lighter than they were, the other ones were. Quite hard to move. Counselor Harper?
In reference, once again, to the capital budget, the LED lighting, parking lot paving, I'm presuming tenders have gone out for that already. And I'm, I'm presuming, is that our recreation complex or is it the sports complex? I should have asked that before.
So, the 471 720?
Right.
That is the sports complex.
Thank you.
Very good. Did you want to add to that, Mr. Wagstaff?
Tenders for paving are closing Thursday. We went out for re-tender.
Good for you.
We only had one tender at the first opening and it was considerably above budget. So, we checked with our consulting engineers in the process and did re-tender. So, we're hoping that Thursday, we have better luck than we did when we opened first time.
Well, we hope too. Counselor Harper? Our Counselor Walsh?
I guess, in the past, probably far past, we considered doing two-year. Is that a possibility? The tenders come in high, that we can, you know, you got a much larger bucket to play with if you go two years instead of trying to do it every year.
You know, I think it's a, it's a great discussion that we jointly should have. We've been really focused on Main Street and getting Main Street done. And I think it's, if we can do that last block this year, I think it's worthwhile doing. But, yeah, we need to try and, you know, it's amazing how little work can be done for a couple million dollars these days.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to, to start doing things in...
these days. Yeah, we need to start doing things in aggregate with our neighbors perhaps, or maybe going to tender every two years, like you say. But we really have been focused on that Main Street. And this will be the last year if things go well with our opening on Thursday. If not, we may not do any work this year.
Thank you for that information and update. So we have a council, Counselor Bennett has a motion on the floor to accept for information. Are there further questions to the reports? Hearing none, call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Counselor Barishel, would you like to put a motion on the floor for the accounts payable checks?
Love to. I move that the April 1st, 2015 to April 30th, 2015, accounts payable report be received for information.
Thank you. Now, this is your time, Counselor Bennett.
Sorry, I'm still going to withdraw because I don't see the boxes of checks anywhere. It's just fine. I'll email Mr. Lucas when he's back. Thank you.
Is that what we're going to do then? Because...
I can certainly try and answer. If I can't...
I think you should still ask your question, Counselor Bennett, and I'll take questions because we have administration here. They might remember what they are.
I'm sorry, but I just had to ask about, sorry, now I just...
Well, that's your job. Don't be sorry.
The Tombstone check, what are they?
What check number is that?
It was 7004. Oh, no, that's the vendor number. I lost it.
I don't see Tombstone on here.
What is it?
7004 Tombstone Studios. Sorry.
7004 Tombstone Studios for 725? But I need the check number, sorry. That other one was their vendor number. 5297. Maybe you just know what the company is. I'm just...
Oh, there it is.
Tombstone 725.
Did we get some?
Nope, I don't, that Tombstone Studios is not a vendor that I'm familiar with. So we'll have to dig that one out. And unfortunately, our other COO is not here today as well, so...
And that's fine. I'll just email Mr. Lucas. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Durie?
Thank you. Worship on page 52, page one of the actual printout, going down to check number 70678, vendor 7675 for $15,000. Vermulon, Ariane, Ariane and Joel.
Do you want to stand up and answer that one, Larry?
Yeah. That's what the work he does, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Supplemental?
Thank you, your worship. On page 53, 70726, vendor 2632, Shadowhawk. I don't know what Shadowhawk is. I apologize. I...
Okay, Mr. McGinnis is writing these down and he'll get the information back for you. So there's three checks, Mr. McGinnis?
Vermulon is Olds concrete, so it's concrete word.
All right. We have a motion then from Counselor Barishel on the floor to accept for information. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Page 58, please, item 13A, final business correspondence and information. And who hasn't? Counselor Overwater, can you please put that on the floor for discussion?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. I move that the correspondence and information report ending May 25th, 2015 be received for information.
Thank you. I have a question. I have a question as to why is, why the promotional item purchase, purchasing policy is in correspondence and information? Like, why is it there? Because this deals with, are we just accepting it for information?
So this is administrative policy, so it's more a procedure. It's not a policy that council approves. So it is the procedure that goes along with the purchase, the policy. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our primary policy that develops policy and procedures states that any administrative policy or procedures provided to council for information purposes only. So this is to satisfy that requirement underneath the parent policy.
Is there any, is there changes in this? Or is this new? Or, go ahead, Debbie, you've done them, so...
As I understand it, and Nora, if I'm off the reality, you let me know, there was a cross-sectional team that was struck and they did review the policies, this policy. And there were some minor amendments done to it. And I think one of the primary purposes for the review was to enforce or to tighten up the delivery of silent action, silent item auctions and pins and stuff like that, so we could better track where those items are going and for what purposes.
I don't have a problem with that, but I would really like to discuss, and this might not be the appropriate time, why the promotional items come out of the council budget. There's quite a, that's a big lot of dollars and a lot of it's, why isn't it coming out of economic development?
These are just the pins and the small items. So there is shirts and that type of stuff are another line item in the budget. So these are the small promotional items that are kept in stock basically for political purposes.
But it, okay. Well, I'd like to discuss this at budget because I, I don't know, staff shirts and jackets and things like that. And we'll talk about it at another time. But I don't know, am I the only one that, I'm curious why it comes out of council budget because it's...
We'll give you the policy that council has approved and we'll make sure that's on the next agenda.
That would be good to review. Thank you.
I just have a comment.
Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, your worship. I do recall this week, I did get pins for a church group, that there was a whole form that needed to be filled out. And I know when I talked to Mr. Fox in Human Resources, he indicated to me that this was going to be coming to council for amendment?
No, the policy is not being amended. The administrative policy or the procedure is being, we have a process that we're looking at these administrative policies through the leadership team on a regular basis. So this one just happened to be on the agenda for us to have a look at. There was a major tweak and it did have to do with control of our promotional items and making sure that they are tracked.
I agree with that, certainly. I would certainly like to look at that or review that with council, that policy. And if you could provide, please, what that dollar amount is for that, for that budget, for promotional items taken out of the council budget? That would be great. Go ahead, Mr. Wagstaff.
Your worship, with regards to the administrative procedure itself, one of the things that was looked at and put in place was the form to fill out. And regardless of where the budget part was coming from, that there was still going to be a tracking and some control at the same spot. So now that comes through one, one office. And the tracking and control was at a two different locations, through tracking with HR and sort of the last spot that that, that form goes to is to myself now. So that regardless of what budget lines promotional items may be coming from, whether it was from council or whether it was other budget lines, that the consistency would still be there with regards to the promotional items being delivered out.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. Any further questions? We have a motion then from Counselor Overwater to accept. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I don't need a motion to bring that forward, Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Thank you. All right. Question period. I'm sure our media will speak to us. Okay, Counselor Bennett?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if this is the time or place. I'm just curious, is the town responsible for the mowing in front of the north side of the RCMP building, like by their front door? And I know they're not noxious weeds, but they're obnoxious, the dandelions, so...
Yes, and Sue indicated on Friday to Staff Sergeant Sangster that their intentions were to get to it this week. It is on our list. It wasn't forgotten about. Staff Sergeant Sangster had actually asked if it had been forgotten about. And Sue indicated, no, it hadn't. It's on the list.
Thank you. And Mr. McGinnis, speaking of that area now that they've closed that RCMP, no exit to where they park and that whole new parking lot's done now, could you explain to council, please, the process of use of that new parking, paved parking area?
So that belongs to Mountain View Credit Union. They had that land as residual land when they build their building and they quickly discovered that they had a real lack of parking. So that will be additional parking for Mountain View Credit Union. My understanding is it's going to be used for staff parking.
Okay, so they won't need signage. The staff will start parking there, which will leave parking open for customers?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, adjournment. Who would like to make? Counselor Harper?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you for staying with us. Dr. Hoovy, that was exciting.
Old Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds, Alberta.